Malungili tasils, tal public hearing, alurur ngiya kamiti ra Senate ra Ways and Means and Financial Matters, el girila Senate Bill 11-9. Tal Senate Bill 11-9, mo olngas ra minimum wage. Ki damdangalia minimum wage, sel basing 350 elang. Ma tal uldasal mola, omdasal wa sey, ma godi godongul mo 375. And then, aneksel, after a one year, godongul ngos iil mo 425. Ya beqarraga, after sey gid, godongul ngiira 75 cents, el mol mo sel bol 650, engya stop. Sey gid, angat tal uldasal mola. Eh, gme ya damdangalia minimum wage, atmla sing, ser alast, el do olngas ngiya engle 2014, sey dida engle 250, godongul mo 275, ul ngas ngiira beqarraga, ra 25 cents, el mol mo 350, engle stop ra 350. Ma ser al stop ra 350, engle 2016, ah omdas, 2016 or 2017, sey dida engya mol 350, eti agidil ways and means. Ma, weera domule, mal, el gurangasuli, ul mlasap iwal, me joiner tal public hearing. Ya, Senator sa mlasapi ilme ya ngari atangal front leadera Senate, Senator Cecilil Aldabel, ma, tereg al Senator Rages Agitaya, ma Senator Andrew Tabalwal. Eh, be biras Senator sa kuram la riya, Tripertir of Ireland, mang nginongariya quarantine, mandi kal sabi iral join, ma, mal malangasuli, ul mlasap iwal me. Ya, weera domule, edik, Kimodercia, microphone lego, ma mengora introduce yourselves, eh, mergo ngi, bo domule, artel public hearing. Pu umol goya, kamintar kame wedo, mu ra public hearing. Ma, kotho rumisanga, Mr. Uludonge, kothal ngaru e, eh, pora...
Sela, ma maske gid.
Oi, oi se.
Mada, malungil odosonge, Chairwoman ra Ways and Means sa Senate, ma Senator Agitaya, ma Tabalwal, ma Cecilil, nga ga muses Uludonge, nga ga adrasesela, la adra babi. Ningariya pora extracurricular activities, la adra news, la adra TV program, eh, mergoe, ningariya, igaril, you know, el business, godur tel, igakidil blakmamasa. Eh, mergoe, mal, ma rongor tal hearing, it's been a long time, giril muriya da la, white tiang e. Mang silbok testify, ak, keltmo kmo testify, ma, akmo uais, akmo gigil wa sing, ra uul ma, akmo kuldub ra tiang, eh, na ra bakladu, na ra experience, sang le uul ma, akmo come to conclusion, wa sing, tegil muriya, ndi amount ta la mu kakros. Gwidi tal ulal moran, anekse.
Malungili itasils, sulang e Chair Lady Inabo, ma kameul Senator sa ngartiang, tal teal, nga ka Ibrin Olgril, ekom dimtangil wa sekura, olngas sel gokura ministeri, nga kubengela, Mr. Uludong Raudoswal, sel bekal Friday. Ndime raringi nga ka entrepreneur at heart, nga ka adras shobai, lomkoro la, magikaril shobai. Masera clue, tol mermera balwak, sel go tol shobai, godur tringi, tal space rental ra office, ma residential, Emerald Dreams Services, tal Emerald, tal tokor bela olreel, Emerald Dreams Services. Ek lo mes, ser abol pandemic, englo, tiakar turist, el me, manggo klo riya teal, el domes wa sing, ngara ngara, alsel abol wadal sabi etal marurangi. Maklo opener sel Emerald Dreams Consulting, el kora, waya kulu ngasero, ra terekel, magikaril atel, ngali kel bela ol sorira tokor raureor. Ma kamentor tir, olngasero tir, wa sing, ma kara offill up tax forms, ma, ikel kora, ngaratalan tangil, sel momo ulel startup, el kekaril shobai. Eh, di regal gok lastir, ek lo mes, sa teal, el wa se, ar other bela, egal shobai ergid, magikaril shobai, atiakamal ath, el promoter ar other bela, ma ikel tokor raureol lorul. Maklo ngua, gok license, nga ke open ra Emerald Dreams Marketing. Mang di regal waya, ngaringi, ikel teal, el sabi iral ar other bela, el me, ek mangod adu ortir. Mang nga ka maloldub artiang, mang muriya teal, kukua is, wa sing, ngarau ul.
Sulang.
Ah, malungili tutawar Senator sa nga kang klika Ali Enediao, akurira private sektore, ngartiang alom tira, ya rokulu kumbali rabos, ra nga khechep parabi. Eh, ma kukura dimne, so akal, me part tal forum, aldi, or ngas awus will girila, tal mol ngas ra minimum wage.
Ali Jennifer Mongloy, representing Palau Central Incorporated. Thank you for today, we look forward to hearing what is about to happen.
Unitol siles, Samuel Scott, President of the Palau Chamber of Commerce, and founder of Palau Sea Ventures Incorporated DBA Sam's Tours. I look also forward to, and thank you for inviting us to the hearing today, and we appreciate you allowing us to express our concerns. And I would like to just, you know, since it's introduction only, I won't go any further just yet, but thank you.
Hello, I'm Jaynell from Cove Resort Palau. Thank you everyone for inviting us. So, I'm with my General Manager from Cove Resort Palau as well.
So Jaynell's already introduced me, but, afternoon Senators, thanks for having us this afternoon, and looking forward to hearing about this, the increase in minimum wage. So Matt Wakely from Cove Resort Palau, I'm the General Manager, thank you.
Malungili sulbe etzilmena, akki, aku kismarial, nga ga riya, kichal ngiya, ra state ngayang ala, aku ki, ing sital hearing, malimisumalan, no ororin sital hearing, sulang.
Milita sile Senator, sa nga kang klika Raymond August, known as Chief Division Employment Service Labor, nindak ngartiang, Chief Labor, ak ngartiang, let's represent myself as an employer capablement, and then concern citizen, sulang.
Ma, komal masulang her beklath. Thank you everyone for joining us this afternoon and this public hearing. Eh, mal masaula, governor ngayang ala, ay no, el wa sing, la amo impacta, et cetera, state government, mandi regal malungila, be olgit, wa sing, emel usia, ababil ngi, mal kora, maskid, wa sing, kora buang ngara nga, os ngi, os ngi, mer tiel, minimum wage, sel sumangmas, as it is proposed, or nguk ngariyang, what al proposed sala. Mang... Mang, agi bay mal, malangasuli, eh, olgit, wa sing, bay dungay, kamentar kame kimbreng, sa ngariya ger, agi ogier, eh, mal, komal masaulan, mlasapi ilme rogu, ya gi mal, dingat tiang loreng sa alda amiu, eh, eh, bo do, kawo dangil, wa sing, ma kara nga dol semo okat tal, close to telela la. Len, girila, rulim, mang, sabel, el dekal sal tom, tomalia economic recovery, di et ta same time, engosu trirar adel, mlasapi iral, lungilak, la nga, ra triral, dekal sal gukmal grusi. Ma, sey gid, kora, delicate tal valen, sa girila, mom dangil, wa sing, la kora buang ngarate telel, magi mal, malangasuli, mlasapi ilme. Eh, olgit, mang bay dungay, kel kamental, kame asomi, kmu ngi, et adatu ul giril. Mang, ma godi lekorka e, Mr. Uludong, et go around the room again, el kmu nga kamentar kame wed, then, sumarriya, karir Senator, sey agi ogier as you speak, sulang.
Mada, malungil odosonge, Chairwoman, agote, tal, akmal bede, wa sing, mlamo e irak, wa ikel molgoe, tal minimum wage, sel sumon mo, kutmokrelang, akmalat, kuwa sing, wa egal toga, ya giril merul omso beri. Ek omdas, ndi akadi, adres ra minimum wage, giril tal ways structure bela. Giril suvir elang, ra role la salary capablement, ma private sector, em ultrugok ra, ta minimum wage, len mo affect ra beklath. Ma, structure, for example, elang, sel sumkodomes, le tia minimum wage capablement, sel momes, ngel godi ngariyo, adagablement, adalongle, sel khabr ngi, ma president, ma vice president Marjazers, ma, sel go, madalongle, ma adolbi akulaw, maklo adispeti. Mang di regal, sel gok tungul mora minimum wage, sel mora private sector, en mal, di agal buldubut. Len elang 350, eh, elang gid, tegidlo ul ngartiang, adiakudengel, wa sing, nebase ngarang, ekom ul, wa sing, mos eklo mo 375. Mang nga, malatkuwa sing, giril merul omso, en nga omral, wa se, ngariya temer elang, el April, el mol mutra October, sel merul omso ber tiang, ekadru ilmuk ekmok. Ma, distate, awul desweka, wa se, a minimum wage, giril di apply mora other bela, ideal apply mora foreigners. A foreigners, elang ngaringi, a kontra tetir, el protect tetir, et cetera, salary tir. Ay gid kontra, tradalongle, employer ma foreign employee, as you dictate ra salary, ma working conditions rogu. Mang, sabel muka kaya, gidam dangil, wa se, al la ra elo, ma, tokolikarab, bluladre elang a, mkitad discriminate. Ndi, el avais, avaid ekli tiang, in fact, a foreigners, abu umila, re, awududir, ewumila conditions tir, eh, protected. El la ra other bela, dekal protected. Ada fara other bela, ma, ta system ra, ta termination, ma kandia ra private sector. Ndi tir melib alri. Eh, Senator Agitaya, tel gi, ngariya experience, nga katiang. A 1975, nga ga, me organize ra, ra adra raureor ra private sector, bela, three mklou kumbali, eti agidil toga ul. Agote, mlariyo awududir, nga 70, eh, mergoe, di agal buldubut, ta tetele, ta hara ade, sa far tir, mang, ndiakudengel, sel kame go, me al amklou, len af, kumongdangil sel time, ra simre, egel kildel kumbali, different times. Le, because, ndi mlakal soril, et cetera, ma minimum wage ra other bela, eti mlakal soril, et cetera, conditions awurel ilmungil. Mang, ngaringi, Aldabe era Pacific, el kimri reli, el Center rafa Fiji, la Labor Union of Fiji, et cetera, tetele la, a conditions awurel ra adra Pacific, el spangse ora ILO. Sey gid, amnestate. Eh, mergoe, ngariya experience, nga katiang, mos egel, luro la, koror municipal government andera meoli budul, ndi et cetera, a scale rawududir. Et di regal, mlanga, ngarang es a state, magimre et cetera, scale rawududir alat, ma bebir a state, ilkum tetir. Eh, mergoe, mang, klo to telela, dorur tiel, sum apply ma private sector, adi regal, dali omso. I will, sel egel mol, valentir ilmungasero. Adi regal, mlam tetera, abetogal adra blal far tir awureirir, other bela, a foreign companies ma kumbali bela, giril tegidil mondai. Migi mlam mora orta, egal, mergoe lokuarak, ma betoga kesel, mang tiang amal klo problem. Atara, atokoi la, muda sual, kame wasin, mo, usisil mora capablement ma private sector, mal umi muka kros. Me elang, al sukum, kudukuk, temdasal, private sector, tal minimum wage, ya kstadi tiang, ekomdasal wa se, a ikel kumbali, in gam ringi ra tarak, at 12,000 el merio, bul la kaper tax. Eh, se, adalongle, sey gid, mora, ba, di agal pera minimum wage, adalongle, sey gid, mora 200,000, bul pera minimum wage, ndi sel difference. Sel kaga kros ra, let's say, sum 350 elang, 75 cents ra, morbebul, difrence, sey gid, minimum wage, eh, sey gid, difference, bol apply ngi, el mora taxetir. Mang, bul nga la affectetir, len mal, malmringre elal siles. Mang, sey gid, awul desweka, wa se, a timing re elal, malklo albul, especially, egal mgegal business, teregal, roguil ngartiang, ala, umsin, tiang, ngara, tourist business mal affectet. Mang, ti, omes, sel go, ikel, magikaril shobai, el kimolap, ma ngalkek orur telang, en te agida, sey gid, sel go mes, ngi, al sukum, mgetmok, et sabem, so amsurbay. Sel sukum, muriya, ni mo apply, di agala, mora ngidil business, mikona close, that's a fact. Mang, agiri, lo mes, ngi, sey gid, wa se, kudemkara turnet, tey agidil, sel extra, el morbebul, tal 350 elang, adongul apply more tax break, gok mustir, a chance, sey gid, emkekaril shobai. Eh, mergoe, el atara, ma question, wa se, el asun, tiang mo apply mora capablement ma, mora private, ma capablement, malubendian. El atara, os ngi, tey agidil, sel discrepancy ra, terekel godi ngariyo, la, mangarababla at. Ek omdas, ekam, olam, dangira worldwide, eh, tey agida, atara godi klo problem, ibna corporation amrike. Ar CEO, ma egan, amsumka million, et teregal, magikarai, mal ngariyo, amsumka mal, minimum wage, le, kuwa, ndi regal, la create, adalala, discrepancy, ma mondara, adalongle. Mang, as sey gid, ginel la, omil, olgit, wa sing, momes, ngi, ak, temdas, wa sing, al sukum, ma capablement, a, ma, ortiang e, el atara, question, as kudemkara, mo pera, terekel ngariyo la, el atav, tokoi du swal, ra el al, el al, ngara crisis elang. Lo se, terekel ngarababla at, el ngara 45,000 awududil morba, mora president, teregal ngara 900,000, pos ilma, redaction ra, awududir, a 10%. El me per, sey gid, el mo, whatever fund, al bodos per ngi, mo, opertian. Al sukum, tey agidil increase, a, amlam muriya. Mang, atabor, sel go, kaike lo, uribla motog, ngati albi, eh, aurikamende, so nga ga, wa sing, increase ra, mo, four dollars, ra October 1, rela rap. Eh, aurio, sey gid, bol 450, ra October 1, ra 223. Eh, mergoe, thereafter, able 50 cents every year, mol mutra, which are seven dollars per hour, because, four, four years after, sey gid, eh, sel go, momes, ngi, wa sing, ma kara. Ndi ge gid, aku, soakal odasal merkamiu, ndi malol, olgit, wa sing, al sabel, eh, el reli omso, reli omso ber tiang. Ak, madigel, wa se, a, kali, ngara, a Ibrin, al asel olngasero, rulim omso. Et ti agida, ruranganamemon, ngaringi, other bela, lo ba MBA ngi, emela bangger, eh, eh, adra, apres a ut, eh, mal successful, la other bela. Ngaringi, business ngi, bela, ma kwam, ma blil, ra kwam, ma uriping bela, mal, rilya stadi, mskagal, wa se, sel minimum requirement ra economically, ra other bela, elal siles, sey gid, ta, eh, batu years ago, al sukum, tewan, tetewang, adam maadi, ma terur ngal, in calculator ngi, el wa sing, require a minimum ra 45,000 income ra il. Et tiras, sabi il survival, ilmungil, mol mutra, orasugang, eh, se, ngariya, edisona la 200,000, dollars, mora ya, a savings etir. Mang, guldeswe, wa se, al sukum, kudemmo setra, a minimum income, a minimum wage, sey gid, a mo minimum. Bol wal sal, ngamo, len, blo, ol sukum, ngadama biil aurorin, si il motmagi, kuke agala, tameka abre sey gid. Mang, sey gid, kora di, o ur, mang, akmalol, olgit, wa sing, di agamemre li omso, determin el al, wa sing, ngalapaltela, minimum wage, ya family of four, adam maadi, ma egan, as il survival, a klangarretir, elal siles, bela, ra waral, bol la tiang, sulang.
Sulang, Mr. Uludong. Ah, kawe, Sam Scott, kavon.
Sulang e, Madam Chair. We, the Chamber of Commerce, had wrote back a response to the request for comments, yes. And, you know, just, this may not be coming from the entire Board of Directors, but, you know, from, from me, for me, as a, as a, as a business operator in Palau, you know, I feel like, you know, we're coming out of this COVID crisis, the impact has been substantial. But, no matter what, the cost of living also has substantially increased, we all know that. We all go to the store, and what we used to get in that bag of Chorongles, or Ben Franklin store, is a lot less than what we're, than what we paid before. So, the question that I have for the Senate today would be, you know, this increase to 375, which was proposed for October of 2021, I feel as though, you know, because, no matter what, hotels, tour operators, ma restaurants, and ma, rower businesses that are being impacted from this, and, you know, I feel as though, you know, we could probably handle a raise up to 375 for October of 2022. And give us ample time to, at least, inform our agents and, and businesses to, to increase their prices, because that's the impact, for sure. And, if that can be done, where it would just, instead of, you know, going to 450 to October of this year, as it was proposed, that perhaps, we could go to 375, and have the ability to adjust our pricing for goods and services accordingly with that. No matter what, you know, the Chamber of Commerce very much supports this bill, because everything in Palau, alu, ma, ma denke, ma, you know, all of it, is morabab, 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 and we, there's really, I don't really know if there's a, at any point in the near future, is it, is it gonna go back down, you know, can, will it? Who knows? We don't know. But ultimately, you know, I feel the pain of the people who are employed in Palau, other bela, other foreigners, you know, they definitely feel the impact when they go to the store, when they pay their electricity, when they fill up their gas. So, no matter what, you know, at $3.50 an hour, that's, that's difficult, you know, it's, it's hard to survive in a place like Palau, where the cost of living has become so high. So, yes, we do need to raise minimum wage. I remember when I first came to Palau, was $1.25. So, we've definitely stepped out of that realm, pretty good, and I'm glad to see the increase in salary, or wages, and it definitely needs to continue. You know, businesses are, that's where it's really gonna probably hurt the most, and, but that's just life in general, and I think it's good. What's very important, though, to keep in mind for the Senate, is the tier two warning level that we have for human trafficking. And, you know, that too, also plays a part. And the question that I have to the Senate would be, you know, does this, if this law were to pass into, or this bill were to pass into law, does the, the minimum wage also impact all government workers that are, perhaps, some of them that are on minimum wage, maybe on the state level or the national level, would it impact them as well? And what about domestic helpers, houseboys, farmers? Does it impact their salary, their wages? And those are just questions that I'm hoping to get some answers today, and how that's gonna be handled, and if it is gonna be handled. Because, you know, I, from, from the Chamber's perspective, I know we don't like to see Palau on this tier two warning level with, with human trafficking. And I hope that we can do everything we can to, you know, I know the Chamber's been doing a lot to just provide education regarding, you know, how to not be corrupted, how to stay in good standing with your business and everything else like that. So, you know, this, this is good, no question, so. But, that's it, you know. I just hope that, you know, we can, we, we all know, we're, you know, the, the business sector is, especially in the tour-related business sector, you know, it's opening back up, it's a slow process. And, you know, after our oceans, and then, you know, we're going into the slow season too, so, you know, between June, at May, you know, by May-June, you know, arrivals will decrease, what minimal arrivals we're getting already, and they're gonna decrease all the way into October-November, when it starts to get cooler, and the weather's, you know, even though the, the weather starts to get better, but, you know, Palau's well-known for its typhoon season, you know, and that's, also has impact on visitors' mindset, you know, shall I come to Palau, or on vacation to a tropical destination, if the weather's gonna be bad, and take that risk? So, those are just other things that, to keep in mind, and, you know, for sure, as we're, obviously, with global impact of the weather that's happening, you know, Palau, the weather here is not what it used to be, you know, some of the storms are more severe than ever, and damage is significant, so those are other things to, you know. But also, on the other side, you know, there's been the rainy season from June, July, all the way through October-November, where it's not been very many storms, it's actually been a little drier than it normally is. So that's also been, yeah, how do you weigh that? I don't know. But, anyway, with that, just, thank you for allowing some comments, and I'll pass the mic now.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Kamnutulang klem, ali?
Oh, nga kang klika Raymond August.
Raymond August, okay.
Eh, Chief Labor, but I'm here, not a Chief Labor, I represent it as an, myself as an employer capablement, concerned citizen, if that's okay.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so, aku, ti, guradi kamentar nga, ma, awul deswe, ma concern nga, about this bill. So, first of all, ya, ti soakal goya, kuwa sing, ta mal, ngaringi, numbers are, mal te lang, al other, I mean, Palawan workers, Sancho Tavo Palawan workers, government or private, am sugra below ra $4.25. Because, akor omra kuwa se, tal vilas, sumo pas, ndi tereke gid, alada, ager, a mo impact len, you know, omri sa awududir, ya, kamam, il go, or, di kingar, adsel capablement. Is there gonna be, like, as sum, mas 75 cents, rawududir, mo 425, nga kal, mas sugra more than 425, mas 75 cents, rawududir, ak mo sabi, egal mitra, sel go, kia, belgi ngaringi, for example, ya, ti obate, example, at sum, ames, so his, ba, abel, less credentials, ra nga kal, mas sugra 350 elang, ya, kaukmal klo, credentials, ramak, mas sugra 425. Omose, awududir, ngel, the less credentials, ra nga kal, mo 425, ya, nga kam, sugra, desisil 425, lobengel? Or, ekom, omose, ya, awududir, kal, morab, mans, sabi egal, mitra, kek credentials. Sey gid, kora di, question, a concern, nga kaling, al sukum, ndiakal, betogal, other bela, am sugra less than 425, et tiel vil, om pas, ringiya, albul, adriro sisiu. Ler, ar ada, am sugra more than 425, al a, sel maturity, nga sey gid, abab. Le, ar adel, masukra more than 4.25, ala, sel maturiting, ar se kidarabab? Masu man dekam increase saududitrigi kith? Adadil kom, I mean, we're still making the same money, still in the same, adadil namis teri, bebe rigid, alukwak, diders tang, namimasa, mi 4.25, dira ala drokui, adirro sisiu. So, se ida kura di konserna ngai, kura kamen trangama, tsu mu kom, momre tavi, implisim, direk al momdasra, kamamal, or edikinger alsel, masukra more than 4.25, kwasim, makara kamama wuxab, amamal, increase, while increase the minimum wage, momutabasula rokui. Sulang.
Sulang, malungila konserna gawe. Um, just, ah, sel paeske, la kapalmentangralla, mang, altsu mang change, engirela, olbi ralulaw, ol, ol change sa seidas paeske. Ma, I think, remember, alastal, change a minimum wage, eh, hidirakal ralala, change sa paeske. Ma, um, ndirakalungila, ah, a minister, ah, mosel, ruli om subalwa, sing mal, ngara impactar gin, mora budget, rablubelali. Salary and wages, budget takutoklol, budget item, line item, rablubelaw. Eh, dirakal mo omis sa seid, mama malmasulang, na klatka. Kabonge, Kabernor, ang ayangala.
Malmasulat sermini, sermina, kor omis at kial 4.25, agun nasu el alta ma, kapalmenta om sin, tramlalangakartial. Eh, akuk mal dimodu ulgirek, el alta, mengmal meringal, aborawa, ah, tsu bo mo sakitian. Malbol private, ah, momas almo tiang, yak maden kwasin, mal motaga klalwo. Mommeringal, alaklal, tigga, tigga, so ilgip, pradri, ilmo tok. Mang, apay gor, omos kwasin, olugum ngani, ala, alba idrelul, agora, ah, togora price control. Et, se, tsu ku, ngadugul, ngos iil, morpapi, tigel, tigel, pay mla ri, morabab, unil, digil, sti, aududede, magadana, os, sti, aududede, lwa da, stretch, ringi, abto, toki, abay koto, mo obula. Doto, mo obula, tongas, akla, alaklal, asto, mang, adu, adu, telmo, tigibetakal, alaklal, se kidabodukik, ringi. Mang, se ida, wa, di, kwasin, olugum ngani, te al, um, olugum, gaduk, ngdakun, kwasin, tiang, se, be, toki, olugum, gaduk, timbu, dim, ngadu, gira, minimum wage, kapalmenta. Eh, eh, private, diwa, diwa, se kidil, kida, dim, kwasin, se, doma, sa, private, metilang, mal, me, alaklal, kli, tamrat, kra, adiriga, nasaklila, asalila, aladri. Le, ndise kidha, aditalsos, er, adri, ah, ah, waysel, mo, mo aktetial, minimum ways. Ndise ida konserna, ngan, ndis ku, ngani, ngod, lalungil, omso del, dada, stopa, ala, dada, mona, price controlling, uldu, te, ida, unil, das, omi, ala, bat, akum, nasuk, toka, ala, adirek. Sulang.
Sulat, adirka, maluil konserna, talgibal complex, omso del, but, eh, hidirakal mo, omsuba, ngi, omsumlang.
Thank you, Senator. I guess, I'd probably agree with what Sam had to say earlier from a business perspective, so, coming from Cove Resort. Personally, I support an increase in the minimum wage. I think it's been 350 for too long, so I think it's beyond overdue, to be honest with you. From a business point of view, though, to go 350 to 425, that's about a 20% increase in, in our employment costs. So, in one, one hit. And employment cost for our business is probably one, number one or two in terms of our expenses, along with electricity. So, from a, from a business perspective, right now, we've got a hotel, we've got a significant increase in electricity costs, proposed increase in minimum wage, which again, I support. But then, we've also got a new tax reform coming in, increase in food and beverage prices through our restaurants. So, right now, and then, and then, you know, we're still trying to recover from COVID. I mean, Ocean's Conference will help us in the short term, but it's still a long and slow road to recovery. So, right now, from our perspective, in our business, we've got three or four things that are really working against us, including, including the increase in minimum wage. So, I guess, one of the things to consider with the tax reform, and I think I raised this in the, in the, one of the tax hearings, is the key to this, key to a GST is consumption. So, we need to attract consumers to Palau, more and more consumers. And the best, you know, the people we want to pay that consumption tax are tourists. So, if, as Sam mentioned earlier, if we have to pass on the increase in our salary cost to the consumer, we're already a little bit uncompetitive with other island destinations. So, if I'm a tourist looking to travel to Palau, I look at airfares and accommodation for Palau, make a comparison to some other Pacific islands, and I'm looking at that saying, wow, it's quite expensive to come to Palau. So, my point is, I guess, again, I support an increase in minimum wage. I think it's well overdue, but I just want to see, I guess, some more support back to our industry. The hotel industry, for one, I think, would be one of the biggest spenders in Palau. So, every time money comes out of our pocket for an increase in tax or an increase in electricity or an increase in minimum wage, that's less money we can spend back in the economy. The increase in the minimum wage, if you take a person from 350 an hour to 650 an hour, is a good thing, because they will spend more money in the economy, and 10% of that comes back in GST revenue. So, the, the government will make more income out of that from higher income, higher spending, and higher tax. All I'm, all I'm asking, I guess, from, from our perspective and the business community perspective is, yes, support the increase in minimum wage, but just take into consideration and support the business community as well, and take into, into consideration the impacts on us right now. And how can we work together to, you know, meet the needs of the government in terms of your tax revenue, also the needs of the community in terms of increasing minimum wage? Because I think, you know, I honestly strongly believe in what Sam said, that costs are rising, 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 and, you know, all of our employees have just been stuck on that minimum wage or a little bit above. So, it has to be done, but if we can just work together a bit better on providing some support somewhere along the line of the business community. I think once the tax reform comes in and your tax office gets to look at the numbers, I hope you're going to be pleasantly surprised at, at the tax revenue that's generated, providing we can, we can, we can attract more and more tourists. And again, if, if we can't pass the cost on of the tax reform, if we can't pass on the cost of the increase in minimum wage to those tourists coming in, and right now, we're almost a little bit uncompetitive, or we are uncompetitive, then our business has to absorb that cost, which means we can spend less money in the community. So, you know, my, my role is to take care of, you know, our employees, be a good community member in terms of paying our tax and also our shareholders. And we're taking care of the community as far as, you know, tax and that sort of stuff. Increase in minimum wage takes care of our employees, but our shareholders at the moment are doing it tough. So, that's all I'd, I'd ask, is that the Senate consider and consider the business community and consider the overall mix and the impact on us of all these things that are mounting up. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Very good point and very important to consider. Thank you for your input. Want to say something?
Go ahead first.
What was your name again, please?
Jennifer Mongloy with Palau Central Incorporated. Uh, thank you, Senator. I think Sam and Matt covered all of our concerns and some of the key points as well. We very much agree and encourage a wage increase. We do believe it's long overdue. My questions now, that they've covered, most of them are very specific. Will there be any exclusions? Or, sorry, um, so currently, I believe certain people are, oh, sorry, exemptions, that's the word I'm looking for, will there be any exemptions? For example, people who have their housing included or anything that's included in their wage, will that then exclude or exempt the minimum wage? And then the second question is, I know this bill was originally proposed, we started talking about it in early 2021, and now that we're in 2022, is there a plan for when this might actually take effect? Thank you.
You don't want to say anything?
To say, um, I think the law right now has exemptions for certain employees who are working as domestic helpers and farmers, who are provided housing, they are provided the room and board and food and taken care of just like they're part of the household. Those are the people who are excluded. And the minimum wage bill is specific in saying that when you're paying a person a minimum wage, but you are providing for their room and board, for their, all their care, you can deduct all of that from their minimum wage. The thinking was, it should be like when you go and work in the United States. You go there, you get paid minimum wage, and you're responsible for your entire life. Employer has no obligation to be providing you with anything else. So, because the relationship of those specific employees was different, they were treated like family, they're living in the same home, eating the same food, provided all their care, that they can be exempt in that, in that way, and then their contract is different. So, that answers your question. And then, the minimum wage applies to everyone, even the government employees.
So, it's going to carry forward?
Yeah.
Sulang, Senator, so you're saying that those exemptions are going to carry forward into the new bill?
Yes, we were thinking that we will just change the, the wage amount and the effective date.
Sulang.
And, and not touch anything else, so everything can kind of continue, and we at least help the people with their standard of living, that they, they're, they're not going to starve or face any, um, um, economic hardship that's too difficult to overcome. And then wait for the econo, economic recovery before we do something else. So, that answers your question.
Thank you very much. It does. Yes, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Masaula, Madam Chair, mno, smodi se, mang, guk, namomre. El akhuram la reng, sertirgal, bebe, ala, da, ke, nga, kadi regal, ala, Palau Chamber of Commerce. Ak vice president, el arrak, esama kuk president. Ndakal ngarang, ak mal, masisi, iloldu, bera kuk, togora, togora, ala, belaw, matogora, begik, kwasi, kau, odi, molamol, mal, lorurta, tiang, eng, mol, mol, klo, kli, ala, belaw. Mang, akhur reng, si, eswaka, obamamdasu, raudoswi, senator tabalwal, komo merku, osangi, e omis, lwasi, ngtelal hotel, a gal, moklol hotel, ak klo, kli, ala, belaw. Et, telar, a gal, mal, moklow, lorurta, at togora tourism, ra, alsel, belaw, ak klo, kli, ala, belaw. Eh, ulakmal, koi, nga, ka, 51 years older, el ang, emle part, rau alil, kial togora tourism. Rau alil, turkae, el ang, sel, omis, at tir, ngan ngarinyan, ngal, karbelaw, omis, at tir, la, titirir, ala, ala, pa, be, omis, a, kalungil, luwes. Alubeng, ngarinyan, ngal, karbelaw, omis, at tir, mal, oror, a gal, hotel, may, gal, restaurant. Me, el ang, si, adiswaka, omkor, omdasu, ringi, eh, ku, ay, sel, wasi, au, ul, makmilo, sa, babi, er, ngak, et, chair lady, el kuk, mer, kamiu, lilea, kla, el gombali, ngak, lika, kith, el kuk, kigel, ku, maral, toki, ah, batokar, ngia, mongod, a gal, kukul, doswi, tir, gal, kim, ala, imol, alat. Le, batokar, tir, akuk, ala, rangod, albulu, e, nga, ka, mal, sen, ngar, arunguk, ah, omis, albelaw, eh, marak, almore, matat, eh, magnit, tarunguk, kial, balwa, altsu, mal, ngal, ketha, twoba. El mo, o, sikate, al, rangod, albulu. Mang, au, ul, mak, milo, sa, lilea, kla, aku, kurat, talgibal, ngod, aldoswi. Mang, esabi, small business owner, e, nga, ka, mal, oldu, bera, kial, minimum wage. Le, ul, makul, du, baringiya, ah, dekal, ngarang, um, swakal, lusis, akar, ngal, karbelaw, lmuwasi, ndakadil, togora, audo, da. Ndirekal, togora, responsibility, transparency, accountability, togora, work ethic. Masaya, kukul, sisakar, ngil, mararat, tir, kith, el ngal, kalsori, ala, belaw, eh, kier, belaw. Lwasi, ndakadil, employment, el bot, oror, kapalmenta. Mal, uba, kada, mo, oror, a gal, gombali, la, moklol, gombali, le, batok, aududi, ala, rangod, albulu, akuk, sabi, il, invest. Nsabaitel, kith, ala, belaw, o, mo, il, mal, uba, kada, maru, lam, kakeril, shobare, kith, likel, do, mis, rabalwa, eh, o, spe. Le, ndakal, ngarang, kada, mlas, amesa, pandemic, el may, et, kia, kith, le, ndakal, sabiel, di, toki, ra, tourism, adultuy, ringi. Ngiret, aldiversify, mora, yar, rokui, it, togora, oror, ar, maras, mar, maru, lakal, la, mar, makarang, pek, patingil, mol, mut, at tir, gal, mal, moto, ma, shares, mar, malu, kakar, kakar, a, ikap, atru, kalt, togora, oror. Masaya, mal, kuldu, baringil, wasi, ala, ala, rangod, albulu, ngar, alsel, belaw, el ang, tir, akamam, ala, private sector, atirek, alswala, minister, ngi, ra, ilo, monta, ngakal, wasi, gamiu, yak, mal, batokar, gamiu, private sector, a, hair, ti, mal, maral, toki. Tir, kang, angart, kial, dekal, lower cost, au, ul. Tangart, tiang, le, ngi, kiel, skills, tir, au, ul. Mang, apay kuk, omdasu, ringi, wasi, mem, dot, pe, tiang. Mal, ala, belaw, ngal, kiel, belaw, bol, sumari, ar, el soril, ngar, albulu, ri, e, kamam, giku, kom, kamam, ngar, private sector, kim, concentrate, ra, training. Le, training, ra, togora, oror, mongila, at, lungil, ludu, dula. Ah, kia, kith, togora, sel, skills. Ntukor, sel, wasi, ngang, kong, ngirem, ra, al, om, mararakaw, eh, kirem, lungil, ngar, antaim. A, kia, kith, ul, gora, tu, ndakal, sabaitel, mal, mesure, eh, senator, Sicili, kang, tangel, kada, mal, mle, ngal, kada, esel, toto, dra, school, and tingarinyaw, redet. Ar, pek, la, ta, tingarinyal, lorul. Mang, ngi, kiel, togora, mases, madu, ar, ar, ngula, at, honest, ngom, mararingi. A, kia, kith, ya, mal, swakal, both, concentrate, ringi, akuk, kamam. Le, kia, kith, private sector, both, partner, lobang, gamiu, ala, kapalment. Bol, waisel, kukul, gora, on, tila, obukurangir, mga, direk, on, tigal, wasi, kada, mo, partner, mal, sumak, kapalmenta, kuk, sabiel, lol, masera, in terms of tax incentives. Alubeng, mora, a, kiel, wasing, kada, ndakim, trend, ala, at, gamiu, molar, tir, prime outsourcer. Outsourcer, kith, rokui, lurior, kapalment, nsebeel, a, private sector, maru. A, kia, kith, lurior, asbeel, mongos, utir, al, al, ngal, karbelaw, mar, ala, belaw, ngar, alsel, albulu, el ang. El sal, mal, malang, mas, a, gal, aral, aklalo, maro, kui. Ak, mal, ak, mara, low, ay, sa, gamiu, kith, akustal, mal, tangat, albulu. Le, ndakal, bol, winter, ndakal, mal, kato, sikang, da, the store, storage. Kado, kado, mal, tangat, albulu, dikiret, mut, almom, mases. Mang, musabaitel, a, kiel, malal, makalid, mobola, kadi, lo, marakal, rastoang. Le, komis, a, gal, tablon, moklol, stoang, o, ya, WC, DC, masurangal. Omkor, alamo, malal, makalid, le, amo, dekal, sal, mal, lo, mais, el, marine, el, mora, a, gal, moklol, stoal, di, om, arar, kui. Ak, tir, kalomdasu, lwasi, ngusab, iran, ngal, keth, mar, albelaw, amo, dekal, soril, di, out, migrate. Mo, soril, mut, almay, mal, uba, la, kie, maruk, ngar, ngabard, ala, belaw, amo, mis, alme, wasi, o, i, ndak, tir, ga, oror, a, minimum wage, kapalment, ma, private sector, am, lam, o, partner, lol, masera, ar, ar, kith, ala, albulu. Um, musabiel, mo, soril, mut, obul, temem, takir, albulu, ri. Le, batokar, tir, am, lam, o, SS, ramri, kiel, namusabiel, mut, almem, takir, em, o, it, audu, dir. Mati, al, ekana, mi, ndakadil, ultuy, ra, tourist, eh, senator, a, kita, yang, mal, kia, kith, tourist, kith, ngar, atalong, led. Asabaitel, kaba, art, e, om, arak, klo, led, em, ru, la, redet, el, kainaseu. Um, at, tir, khal, box, so, dia, sel, togora, shukang. Ak, customs, applications. Ala, ala, rangod, albulu, ngar, alsel, belaw, al, ta, tomo, monta, ra, ala, lakal, lam, morabab, mangarang. Dingwaisel, i, kela, di, lu, chair lady. Kamam, private sector, lo, hair, tir, a, a, ki, make sure, ngarinyan, apply, ri. Ma, hospital, tir, maro, kuls, she, kapar, tir, kamam, oma, ar. Ala, ala, belaw, ngar, alsel, bela, ti, tir, nditil, mingis, mukar, tir. Ngak, pek, alboi, le, fortify, le, ten, wam, al, uba, tumkakeril, ala, ta, me, o, sik, ngak. Nsuka, kalsiki, apli, kent, kia, kacpor, ngim, lam, swakal, apli, mama, masera. Le, tir, kasori, el, mom, ru, la, oror, nditir, khal, marine, rat, tir. Masay, kith, ak, nak, amplol, mal, kort, kili, wasi, ak, togora, shukang, gamiu, altsu, man, tir, altsu, mak, tir, kith, kie, ala, mam, ma, talama, tir, kith, kiel, masisi, ndakang, ar, alim. Nsabaim, il, bay, mo, ng, may, dung, ala, luba, mo, o, sik, a, kiel, kuk, ng, roth, ang, ra, l, mol, al, mom, sa, ant, ti, ma, ang, koli, shukang. La, kam, roth, tumaring, lap, tulu, mara, audo, da, mangarang. Le, k, tir, kith, ala, apli, mal, tir, kom, sisi. Ling, tiragidrata aplim, ldirkum sisi. Matukuk marula ike, akal asukang iki tawngil, nding, ndiakadil tokorau douda. Mang mal, kamama maringel loureor, marother abalu, matamaringel loureor. Lo multotian, morsel ngia maral, asukang, ekla ibelaw, klabelaw, ar other belaw, elkaynasew. Ngaringa ar maras, mukaduk mortir, mar marula kal, pekpa dangi, lakadi posoplo, opedidoulandar omaturokui. Matian, kontinuu, ma minister ngiray, makamamil private sector, lpalau chamber of commerce. Altatamakasa, ar other belaw lo maray, gang, dinga ka mal, matangeel wase, gumiu, amatokor, amatangeel, kom, mal ngatil aldrual. Eh, emlamais abalu, mokomlamis. Ngakasel parawahuriping, maykar raviatnam mangrang, altang lo dudel million sa turist. Ndia kotekengalak, laykelkora, ar na, abul ngarat kulara elma. Ar, batokal alabul omwes, elmo endjort, ltmalungil hotir. Ndiakal swata balwat, apalwaisel. Nswata balwat, altapasul, matongurusartirkel itutel merbab. Mangaka omaral wase, ndiakal magitirkel ngara balminta, wat chief. Ngarpapa skulel, mongtirel ngarpapa utudel. Ndihale pokul turka, regidl atobelaw, ebo domes ra first, tirkel ma abul, lngso, edhola ngasartir. Ntiel minimum wage sa malungil, ma malolduver ngi, at tu, tumiind, ndiaka amount, at dehkal mare. Lesel amount talgumiadisay, daringi, akmatangeel omaral wase, gumiwamla, ar mulasupiliulki deltian. Ngaha omaral wase, apay, bol tarangu dudel public, private sector, the partner, lolongas, ar, ar, tiragidl atat. Bol soril kera abaluril, dehkal top, dudel mo solda, edhipol, e bol soritirkel ngaro idel may, etiel ekana mi, ndiakadil bol tourism, aramurtaringi. Mal mo pekpa dangi, laktokorau reor, aramurtaringi. Yanga kamalukoi from experience, ldirakal wase, ulmak nosdar, sel first, incubator, ra alsel belaw, douda reor, ra last, sera last year, after a lockdown, raphandemic. Akmal melasiu, eh, omes rabalwat, and loasen, ar ngalket, atiakadil douda, arulia at. Lmoblakar ngurau reor, mal uspe awngil, community, ma village, sel, sel dangalak, katatingalikir, ar pekla at. Potokau karreu, edho supportartir, mansukum kukswal, lmarula spicy sauce, edho supportaringi, raser sel, hot pepper. Okuswal ngara, ey, to supportaringi, ratakadil, legal kukseba aman losigel keel lo, ne assistatil, apply capital. Alungil investment, agimun marikil, diaki dimdasu, gkamamil, wase bol maklolaket, ngamil, mura douda, gkamamil, ore diaki u credit. Metol, lkorongal investor waseng, ngakit mongka mongka, ngasabiel marula ngarang. Ebo douda merak, douda merakertial, klangal tanganat, lmortirkal, pekpa dangi, asabiel marula urur, ingar ngiatel. Ndithumititur, tholsis akartir. Esirakal tholsis akartil, wase, accountability, ma transparency, aykekidl tokor ma linson, ngara, abalu, aklotutelil. Ki dhal dangalke, senator, sesakam dangi, selolkor gitar maklol atakaduk mal mongulle, ol tirakla. Makat, malasam, sel gomes abelar el al five to seven years ahead. El malungil, laborpapa minimum wage. Esirakal lobangkel til ang, malungil, alpor ngial mssisi, a training, loasen ndiakadil, tiyal douda. Arokuil tokoi, lobangkel tiyal douda, dudela at rangal at, aklotutelil. Se kid, amal dikulingi taringi, eh, oaisel wase, akmat yangal lolduver ngi.
Kamal masauli, Irenra, malungil, kamentarkaw. Um, I guess, uh, tirakal malklol, concerner kamama. Selborpapa minimum wage, when the wage goes up, the quali- the, the worker has to be more qualified. They have to produce at that level of minimum wage. Because it would be hard for a business to pay someone four dollars who doesn't produce four dollars worth. So, the, the qualifications of the workers have to go up. And, and as an economy, that's very good. It's good because we're gonna be expecting more from the employees. But how do we, magarang abo the trainer tir, Iren, like you're saying, minimum wage is good, but, uh, training is very important and integral part of it if we are going to make this, uh, employees worth four dollars minimum wage. So, and we don't want to leave the Palau people behind being unemployed, and then continue to import more foreign workers. That's not our goal here. So, I guess, eh, what we need to think about as well is how do we make sure that the outmigration is not being encouraged by hiking up the minimum wage? Because when the minimum wage goes up, we attract more foreign workers to come in. Because their wages at home are lower than our minimum wage here, just like the United States. Because it's paying a very high wages, entire world wants to go to the United States to work. So, it is a challenge to how do we keep the foreign workers out while we raise the minimum wage for the local people? And it's, it, it, there is no answer yet, but I think it's something that we all need to make sure we do not shoot ourselves in the foot by, uh, raising the minimum wage and encouraging outmigration. So, um, so we've heard, uh, many suggestions. Mister Scott wanted to start with, uh, quarter increase to allow more time to, uh, make sure the economic recovery is possible, and then we get up on our foot before we start really putting more on the minimum wage. Um, uh, Mister Aludong suggested four dollars and then fifty cents every year after that, until it's seven dollars. Uh, the United States federal government minimum wage is seven dollars and ten cents. So, I guess we'll, once we get there, we'll be on, uh, about the same level as that level. Um, so, the challenging part of this is making sure the private sector is really on board, that it is affordable, and the private sector can compete, not just in Palau, but also with the outside, outside of Palau, especially the tourism sector is competing with outside of Palau. And being close to Asia, you know that most countries in Asia do not have minimum wage. So, you can, you can hire anybody for any amount you want in Asia. So, it's very hard to compete with, uh, countries that do not have minimum wage. So, it's gonna be a challenging task, and we don't have the right answers. But, uh, at least if we make improvement without it affecting too much, and then go through the economic recovery and see what happens, but provide something to the people who really needs, um, some more income in their pockets to, to survive and to, to thrive in the economy. So, I know, um, Mister Aludong wants longer study, but, uh... Igior ogere, Mister Aludong, waseng, aykelkora experience, sergavengora wangaral lomsuba. I know it's more like an economic study, but they will tell us to hike it up to seven dollars, I know that, so, um, no, our suggestions are about.
Kidah, kidah malmkasailat. Malmkasailat, esemdi, el al mo kluuk, egmoalistra, aruguloset, telal at aurur a balminta. Etelal at aurur a private sector. Esel, aw, it takes probably one week, la eska akal gombali, samita, ikam kumomadegi, abritarat. Ndikumdasu, el a, sel ama klotutelau omsub, agedirulia cost of living study. Edirekal malbeotadurur ngile, kadi motchakarakla, sel wase, eh, klotuteladalil wase, aykel basic necessities. Mal telal, aykel affect practically everyone, uspe, meal, brush, eyes. Aykel, aykekidasabiel identifier, ngua, la cost of living, maykel kuk kasaril, wayakosu, maykana dia, dia. Ndikumgo, se kid, demo basis, ekamotragaklil wase. Mal telal uspeel, a imul family of four or six, el, ranis, ngal, aykel basic necessities, let's say one month, ma two weeks. Nsabiel otregaklil wase, ngara, asukum ngamo uror, asukum bukti imul at auror, entela, ingamil mosabiel, fittertian. Eh, halle, agirdermo, oblagatakladu, kidah ul, mama ulmagim, positial bululmodokurich, mo independent. Ndiakadungal, ngalambregel, mangidil bululmodikid, tabelaklangar kid. Mang mosabiel digid, elmeka decisioner kid. Ekida amlamu goarak, goam erurak, el du repablik, elui ma ewidrak, el dokurich. Ada, ada saal, ekadum lamosaal. Bar dil, mkomlamu, namogired, el digid, el rumula omsubed, eh, egmiu, omeser gumiulukui. Gumiel ngarpapa skuliu, komdina oruta balminta, oruta business. There's no reason why ndiakas, inmodul, oklulitja study. Just among yourself, with the staff of gumi, mal statistics, omaskamim. You can sit down, you know. I don't think it will take two months to do the study. We already have statistics. Mama reporter statistics, la, aldisia ataluror, maykal, obisal kita planninga olap. Akumdasu, if you sit down, yelkamitir, gmemulas, you can do it. Akumdasu, I don't think we should go out and mosika experta for, uh, foreign countries in May. One bigel, mamklo, lummutaro, kam, tahir a firm, gombali imul. Ndikumdasu, ekidadiak. Ndikumdasu, we have enough intelligent people, we have enough educated people to sit down and do this. El a, ul, sel, eh, academics gumi, tiang, ediam, take it, as offense, eh. Sel cross actor, omururni. Ndimlagis gumiu, el modul okla kutmaklisi, el mulmu, tawarada congressam regel. Tamlo, tamokra,ada congressam regel, debate, wasen, telamora ngal, kantel, tel, tel tama albul. I think you can do that, especially kau. You have a lot of educational knowledge, please do this. Mo, asesilil, yagame, asenator, gmeamal, mkanmala school. You guys are so well educated, so well experienced. I think you can do this. Mesel ngaykal auul, elak tirak, no okrtiawasen, ngram, mo three seventy-five, al, mo, oh, four dollar, mo twenty-five, on what basis? Magukk regamendesun kau, okdomesekidose, mo fifty cents, eh. Ndik tirakal ngatel omdasu, ndiakakla, ama, rilakmal, modul okl, malkulita, igalwasen, what figures? Ya wongira, ya auul, adiakalamulak, straight. You can actually find out how much a family of four or six need a month or two weeks. So, you can come to the salary level. Mang, elang April, lanteh, April six, April five, four? I mean, between September, you can do this study. Malu, as, harrangang, maybe tirakal do this study. Ndikumdasu, I think you have capacity to do it, with you, even with your own staff, ma obisal planning, ma statistics. I think you, you, you can do it, or they can do it, Sulung.
Ndiakamal masauli, Mister Aludongi, ngaring sel household income and expenditure survey. Se ol ultra, klangara, adabelaw. Eh, average a household, uh, three point eight, uh, arawan a family, mang medel four. Di, uh, last, el, hiisa, mirura, twenty sixteen. Ya, umdasat mirura, imora, twenty twenty or twenty eighteen, something like that. Ndithirakal topada, tirakal official, uh, sel statistics, mandirakal topada. Eh, nsaabiel ngua inflation rate, uh, every year. Ma, giola, baykekid, number, ayke tirakal, madange, disiar ataluror, ma telangara balminta, ma telangara private sector. Mang, we, we do have, uh, the statistics. Uh, di, kora, amaringa, lasel, domes ar ngi, wase, kadumdo ngalia, aluspe ngia, tulungalka. Eh, ya belawa, pekal tulungalkar belawa, tirakal, um, ngaringa, ingamartir, etiakar ngiat choices artir. Ndirekal, nsaabiel lower, uh, cost of living, ngarka, nsaabiel ngul morpaval, depending, wase, uh, kamanga wangarange, obayla wangarange, omakala wangara, kainna different, uh, household, uh, kaharosa, needs artir. Mang, um, aklotutel, asemagara, the balancer, se kid, damasel, il kuk, uh, private sector, uh, economy. El, el waseng, mo wangaral burdena tungul, loliar se, ndi, nsaabiel balancer ngi. Sel, el domes a aral aklalo astwang, yankmedel ten percent, daringi, a, amora aral a labor. Legida di importaroku. Mang mostera aral tiel klalwa, aral el ngaradiyal lalmay. Ndiakal aral, il gidau lamewa, ngitian. Ngaral ngaradiyal lalmay, eh, ten percent ra, cost daringi, a, mora labor, l, lo varang, malal, lalme, malani rata na ultra, ringi, ma profit, uh, owners, ma, keringi. So, um, even though, ngasiya, uh, twenty five cents, fifty cents, eh, sel domes ra, uh, uh, ten percent ra aral aklal, will, lattributed, lmore, uh, total cost, eh, the fifty cents, uh, morpap. Nsaabiel waseng, maybe one or two percent, asukum ngaringa price increase, raka kal, lattributed to that. By, rala alu, ma freight cost, ma, ramregel, lme, leng, lamomkasa klal, lring, because of the, uh, economic impact, uh, pandemic, uh, has a bigger impact, uh, price increase. So, um, nsaabiel, ru, ruley omsub, ayke, dalkal, madange, wase, el altaimental, hebel, kora, ngut statistics. Le, kadumdo ngel, wase, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, uh, private sector has gone down quite a bit. Mang, um, se kid, lukor, wase, kadumagaran, extrapolate from what it was to what it is now, eh, extrapolate forward, that, tirakal, um, it takes, uh, somebody with background, and waseng, magarang, at the, at the level, or se kid, el, waseng, maralgiril ngatiagid, when it's not there right now. Magi, omeser ngiltalagib, el, el kora tricky. And, uh, ma, ulmagi, wase, ndiakal sabiel, di, ndiakal sabiel, di ngul, sel cost of living, el ang. Asukum on seven dollars an hour, a cost of living, el ang, ndiakal sabamal ngul, mora, seven dollars an hour, le, private sector, ma, a balminta, tirakal, dehkal sabiel, el, ndiakal sabiel, they don't generate enough revenue, per, aseb, asehidl, actual living wage. Kudolgeringil wase, living wage, sel, omongargeringi, maral, nsaabiel, kaba, rokui, expense, rakhlangarakaw. Mang, uh, ki, imo, omeser ngi, Mister Aludongi, ndiakal, even a balminta, el ang, ma tungul, mor se kid, mandirakal, nsaabiel a balminta. Because of our, our government revenue is not enough right now. Ma ul, mang, um, kudu, kudu, asekada, masuper ngi, eh, maybe, uh, give it time. Kirilmongar ngia, a number of years, au, ulmakadu, wase, the, tapsa, ten, ten, la, elmo, six fifty. Yeah, we, within, uh, uh, six, seven years, ngia ma six fifty.
Chairwoman, hadikeda, tiel cost of living, uh, umdas tiel alu, tiangamal basic, kama ditil, mal affect, uh, tiakadil gidblulat. Akmalamewa mesra, tiel next door, gas station, um, six twenty-seven. Ya last week, akulmesingi, ble six twelve, la increase fifteen cents. Ela, uh, mutal, dielse, akasaklo, se, nso, sok. Ediakudungil wasa, akmalger, tirakal, atar alu, maldiakasabiel, explain, merangal, waseng, magarang, asukum, gmeamil arar, tirakal, fuel, supply, several. Tamil arar alu, ra last month, el meser ten amount. Na wulmeo, trur, akal gas station. Ya, el alsi, se kukul ngasa, aral a fuel, uh, ramregel, akal, eh, enmas aral belaw. It doesn't make, obok, kamlam arar tian. Akal tablogombalira, babluwe, ma, sel, amlam arar, outside el mel, ngaratingil. Emulo trur, akal gas stationutian. Ya, ngasa aral, uh, alu, ra rosial, alubengaral, alu, ramregel, in, jump, raksetongsi.
Sulang e, chero men e, usu bes e, otigil me udu me. Ege gida, otogulugil ala du, amla, amla toh buda lekong. Eh, algo kti me orreng se. Akma deyek mo ukko, ngudu ulkora mo, oi tishel mokteka da ngat yanga, amolongas aranir adama ma ko, mu mhitel toh lmerid. Eh, ege lal go, ngirma nga ege al agidi, domese, do lasm lo tirak la ege ilu, wasi, ngme al amla, am suwut kel, ulasumola, tei domese ring daytra, eh, last year, amne girel mo urut ala. Mmm, whatever lige la om ti ba, ah ukka, la private sector amamlasum, baget kurba, balsebeel, multiraq ne, ande, tei luka, ngara ra konbaliri gida, ala uk maria ilia, kuva bilingin meil, ah ukko, tei ala ro ur, ngau, teak ala ro ur, akukte o sisa ba, ngaregad mo urur, ah umraq mutra amal, ulkora mi iit tei gida la, om saura tei al.
Om sulang, al ngarnia, kamentar kamewe, balsebiwal, luduruk almeimel, nguswira kamiti la, om subel.
Amo esegide, chero men et ki ra, ova ur maranglela konbalim, talad regal, amo domese ringi otogra, babiel.
Sulangko. Kaponge, Senator Aldabayala.
Well, it's a silly, ah, agote, mm, tei lhearing a basic leaky soli. Ay, kada, kamiti la senet soli sita kamentra public, ma, merani, amama mal, ngiramending atyang e, orreng se, ege lke kamentekameu, ma ege luka kuldaswio, ma recommendations, ege gida, give ngalme take into consideration sel kim, mm, from, continue om subel tei al, al ludasanmola. It's a, one of those piece of legislation that's, has been brought up in the previous, ah, congress, but somehow, it never materialized, except for the one time it was materialized, and they brought up the minimum wage in more 350. And since then, ah, the minimum wage has been fixed ever since, and the prices of goods and the cost of living has been going up almost every single year. So, ah, kamiti, is, is wali, share a few respond, if I may, el mari ege luka, kamentar babya namdung. Agote, amama mal, domese tei l very cautiously, ah, one, ngirel take into, ege l dilumister, Ludong, wasi, ngirel mo, mo lom subel teang, ege lmo, domesa, petogel information, madeira, al confirm ege lwa, assumptions, sel gida, ngirel tei ludasanmola. Ah, toguni ege gida statistics, ah, atogra employment, workforce. Ah, we wanna be able to also, ah, understand the, the consumer index. Ege l needs, ah, day-to-day living, or other belaw, especially, ma ege l, luka, bebir, aspektra klangar, ala dal tiral tuira, ege gida, al normal income, ah, artir, logio atogra urior. Ege diregal, somam lo domesa, ah, a market condition. Ah, Mister Scott, ah, diregal men serak, wasi, importanta timing. Now, ah, with the condition of COVID, na affect bebir industry, and therefore, we need to take those into account as we, ah, deliberate on, on, what level of minimum wage will, will best balance the, ah, the, the needs of the employees, and at the same time, maintain the businesses so that, you know, they, they don't, ah, be burdened by, ah, all the cost of, of, of employment. Ege diregal, somam lo domese, sel, te dule sing, kukko singela, kabelment regid, sel wa, national goal, ege kmasi, kada maral budul gida. How much of the development do we wanna, ah, expect in the coming years? Ma ege luka, priority ra, kabelment, ege l, ah, ege l, different industries, ma, different, ah, ah, investments that we wanna, you know, incentivize to bring into palaw, and at the same time, if they are, be existing, and soal, diregal, encourage, ah, high-qualify, ah, employment, to get into those industries and, and perform, to produce for the expectation of the nation. Um, Mister August, amno, ulkora amne, raise a malungil point, tei lgeel sel, klaseng, elakadukuk ti, increase the minimum wage, tei lgeel already on board, with the experience, ma credentials, sel that, ah, should there, that should be commensurate with the, the level of pay for them. Om dasa, minimum wage will, will have to apply to everybody. It doesn't apply to only, ah, those at the, at the bottom of the pay scale. Minimum wage sa setra, for my understanding, ma klomaranga, klaseng, setra sel minimum, balsebeel ala dal, l, l, sisa ba urior, with the very minimum set of skills, segi da minimum pay. So, segi da, most starting point tra pay scale. Unfortunately, it's only the government that has the, the formal salary scale or pay scale that, that we follow for every class of, of jobs that's requiring the government, international government. State government is using the same scale. Um, ah, ah, om dasa, korta, ngod apes keler ngi, ma olbira kalula, ngod apes keler ngi, ma ulmang ege l, al, ulmang ege l, al du, ah, tabal wal. Tei lgeel ngani, segi dal, wal kora, ah, diakal, al, tabasul, malubeng, diakal, lol tirak, or sisiu skill, el, el pay, el mora, ege lka karusel, ege gida, tri lka karusel branch. So, that's another thing, I think we need to be also looking at, um, and perhaps, ah, ah, for the private sector also to, to be following, following the same thing. The last thing we want to do is set up a minimum wage and a struc, a pay structure that's only gonna be attractive for the government. And so that, all the skilled and, and all the, ah, people will be, ah, looking for jobs in the government and, and leave the private sectors. I think that we should reverse that, ah, kind of, ah, my, my mentality, ege l focus, ah, development tra private sector. So those are, um, things, ah, based on our observation and our, 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 our analysis, ege gida, luka, area blak mention. And, you know, kamiti, ah, amlasam, al strike ravallens, sel girel, alo, base ege gida, al ka karusel, al conditions, malubeng, aspektat tei ludasanmola. Mmm, akma deyek, ah, petogel ala, orreng se tiangela, ah, diregal saurikmo, se meredel mo tokoi tiang. Anding, ngirel maral mo, lalakle, domese esegide, len, agote, kada maral, umraq, klaseng, ala dal belaw, ah, amnamo ngirel kukka, atiasta, ah, ah, weichu se tilmo, o ater, ala la dalang okla, ma ulmuk tokoi. Andi kada, diregal, klaseng, some of these things are beyond our control, like for example, the price of fuel. Ah, we have no control over, ah, those, perhaps those conflicts in other countries, that's just creating this, ah, the price, tei l, specific commodity, tei l, lu, el morab, which is something that we first not able to produce our own. So we have to rely on the, on the oil-producing companies to, ah, send, export their, their fuel to us. Mmm, ege gida, bebir of factors, and, you know, sometimes, mm, mo challenge, ah, a leadership, mo challenge, ah, ala blu, re, ala blu, amo demand from the leadership, klaseng, do something. Malu, ngani ege gida, bebir, tokoi, mo, mo beyond, ah, ah, control, ah, blu. Malubeng, ah, one, one, ah, leadership, il mo, dong okle, e negotiate, tokongela, ege gida, ma klol konbalim, ma klol, el blu tiraproduca, abatol, commodities, malubeng product, tei lgeel, mal, amo, mmm, diregal, sometimes, we need to, as a nation, I think we need also to, to think about our internal, ah, product, products, productive abilities. Perhaps we can start, ah, exploring alternative source of energy that will reduce our reliance on, on fossil fuels, that's has come beyond our ability to, to afford. Ah, perhaps we can start producing food that, you know, we are heavily dependent on importing from other countries. So those are some of the national policies that I think all has to be taken into consideration and, and factor into this process of, of formulating, ah, a wage policy that will be a win-win for everybody, not just the government, but also the private sector. So I just wanna, ah, say those, ah, just so that you know that we are really doing our best, you know, taking into account all your considerations and your concerns, and, and, and put this together. So I believe with, with everyone's input, ah, we can put together a, a good policy for everyone, not just the government, but also the private sector. So thank you for your time. Sulang.
Sulang e, Senator Aldabayala. La yankamita ke, Mister Ludong.
Ege dal, amolastan nga, ma, medikul ngite, kada, ala du ulgirela, tei gida, tei letale, ege nekdi ko bagal mora statistics, ah, information, kada magaramo, klaseng, teila ildi sel, ala, musuka teila, musa edel determini tei gida, el wasi, teila increase, sel justifying. Mmm, akor omdasu wasi, ngme al amdungli, ah, sel budget officer, US government, ma GAO. Akor amlatkla, wasi, si, si kmitel wa di chens, tei kabelment, amnamo urge dil, bedin manir, amnamo, amnamo udei, udei, diakal mem, create, tei gida, bali, balsebeel, wa, el al, otiagid, eda kurtir, et muska statistics ela. Sel adi one economist, ma, ta, taun three statistician, sel independent lobbyist, sel balsebeel, 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 budget analysis, sel muskuma statistics, muskuma figures, ubri lari ngi, mndiak, pozur, tel mo galikta, ngara lobbyist, ota galikta, ngara lobbyist. Amam, ngara newsa, ma, amri, awa is, kada kola, obisla, pene, toasi, mor ger, mukol ger, mor utra census. Akma ege l census, kil di twelve thousand eight hundred etalad. Na, ma, amri, ambo deyek, census, wa, el ar, toasi, diak, diak, five years ago, etakudir kamarur ngi, dirkampa la, information. There's no reason, wa, diak, senso, sel gida, every month. Teak otogel gida, blu. Mndiak gida, kame omdasu ngi, em, monge i, mora, mora ege l, uraiders, eh? El, em, em, study, sel system, amri, omdasu, ta, mal bestel. Me, amdeyek, sel gori, amondara, ege ltorur pari, ete dimortir, sel miste, statistics, budget, ni rokui. Mmm, omdasu ngi, Senator Cecilil, kora amnara, kabelment, lamdungli tiang, sel balsebeel, mket, mket li tiang, omdasu, sel gida, el al mora. Embergo, e, ngme al omdeyek, wasi, sel, wasi inflation factor. Remember, sel, negotiate, kampak, ta, amleku, otoklo, mondai. Eri ala, amri gela, tiril me last minute, dimla, soril me, sel, last time, kim, kim negosia, mle tiril, ngulmon, te, dimiskama, sel, la, mosbeel, mo ai segi, sel mo interestet, tei ale, ege l, investment regid. Mmm, segi dal inflation factor, sel, kela, rala, kala, rabe krag, sel, diak, se edel ngulu, so, sel sipit tiang. Sel, sel, inkris, ah, sel minimum wage, e, diregal, loya ga, sel, maral, klan, ngmas, kal, kal, mulai, tenil percentage, sel ngul, mregdir se. Mndiak, buying power, arat, amol, amri, sel, se, fifty cents, alubeng, twenty-five cents, ngmas. But tell buying power arat, amnamo, ma, me, sen fifty cents, alu, twenty-five cents, ngammas. Eh, di guk, suk ma ralakla, amnasu, sok, mo, mal morab, em, mo dekal, tutrel tila, dekal, nuswir arat. Ma, ka, omdaswa saygid, wasen, in se edel, wasispira, sir tian dia. Ma direct, la, mal diregomrango, wasi, o omdaswa, teag, Mr. Nettors. Make clear foreign workers, ma local workers, minimum wage, and apply more kid. Eh, foreign workers, a ngaria contractor ti, the negotiate, a dalo ngulid. So they agree, whatever they agree, I mean, that's good thing. Ma, su, ma, foreign worker, dekal, saal, ndiak, me, me, dekal, ngerni. Eh, kabalment regid, anyway, protecter ti, it oversight, a contract. Me, koma, nde, wasal, lamelter, foreign workers, el alseels, al mutalroyda, lamelter, adar belaw lurior. Om terminate ra aden ngaria requirement, ma, a, a, rule of conditions, regid ablidir, ma, gir rokui, egidra adar bela dia. Mung, direct, namo, du swalas, bay make litia, muklaba, du, du, se. Mukpolu ngila, akuktritunwa, adar belaw, eh, direct, ak tumutrol ngiter, me. Rule of conditions, ra employment, ra belaw, whether it's private or government. And there are certain minimal conditions, a ta rurior, el girel morulia, kung garan, garan, ademongil. Eh, tar ngil, malgur ngiter ngia, o igelulwa chairman. Sell sukum, guk minimum wage, ma, du, du, ngammas, eh, girel mongmas, a performance, te kalan. Eh, mung, tarama, imol toolil, a giredl rule, il kutmakli. Amoringa, require a bekle employer belaw, mora school, training. Once, maybe one week a year, ra certain profession. Mung, upgrade ra knowledge, eh, ma, direct, production of ti. Eh, tarakotel, el blul, famous, kumsumi, kum, kum di mo anlan, eh, chek ngi, ablura Israel. They have, they call workers college, ndai nga, el whole purpose, ngadi, ol, se, akra, adar rurior. Ra kakarusal sectors, so, so, training one week to two weeks, el upgrade knowledge of ti, may, akarusal industry. Mung, a direct, el al, la, teagidil, el bulid, na, la, giredl momulai kan, ma, dada, sell, nasau do, ma, training, ti, mongmas, ma, production, ti, mong morab. Ma, malulngitan, wasen, omdaswa.
Mister Olutong, kahle, kuadi, goritang. Ah, ah, kotlu ulaw, ulma minimum wage, a apply more a rokul workers.
Ulma minimum wage, say girel, apply more a rokul adar rurior. Ah, as gu, mang, a, adangod, el blu amel, ngariaw, doodel. Eh, la, deka employer, al mo, o employer, adar belaw, let, ngarba, bau doodil. Mung, weyer dil bololay, ra adarangod, el blul, me, rurior eh, eh, ra advela, dekal, sepein, motmure, gal rurior. Ma, taraki, mo ra, omdaswa, ringi, wasen. Kada, ma garam, eh, rule, mang, a, a, rokul adar belawa, moringa, urelir, eh, mergo, kada mu employer, adarangod, el blu. Saygida, weyer, direct, mal, maringal, uldaswal, eh, gim, alban, arangi, o, Mr. Tiala. Mung, sell daswam, wasay, a minimum wage, se bol apply more adar bela, we la kal apply more adarangod, el blu. Mung, korawa, ngarang, a, o, o, meser ngi, eh, guk, omdaswa, tegidil, concern, ra, a, olbi da kalulaw, wasay. Makita, adar bela, dil bol moit, la kal rurior. Eh, a, ar adarangod, el blu, dil, el bol employer, ti, let, toongel, malarang, ar yo, me, rurior.
El alseels, em, olar, adabanglades, Indonesia, Siapa, eh, negosi, a, ngaria contractor, dalo ngulid. Mung, sepeel morab, espeel morio. Oh, mung, saygidela, a, direct, let's go, mukomora, let's say, mura banglades, kumora india. Eh, guk negotiate, eh, sepeel, kongera, one dollar, and, ah, winea. You know, it goes both ways, you know. Mung, ndiak, bota, tel arakrat, tell, digam, guk ti, di la, ada, em, eh, tell, let, ya, to contract. They have agreement, an agreement has to be signed by both party. But, what, a, toongel, to dollar, wa, na. But, oh, na, kamla, ambrali, gal blulu, siga, ra, they can get as low as one dollar per hour, kada misstila incentive, may, gal. Mung, omdaswa, ndiwasen, private, ti, ndi, ti, merurangi, a, a, employers. Ndigi da constant period, ra, ada, de, bay guk, di, belopra, tell system, begidimongil. Atar, ulmu problem, raba, a, employers. Ndia, mal, o, meser, sell employment contractor, foreigners. Ndiga, wa, isel, toolil, mora, adar belaw, ndiak. Dekal, basic working conditions, el girela employer, a, a, adar belaw, el fulfill, girel employers, ti, ndiak. Dekal, la, protected ti.
A, omdaswa, tegidil, la, a, minimum wage, a, kumlu, wasay. Asu, ma kumbali, a, employer, adarangod, el blu, em, masanga, blil, mamlil, magalel, mapet, tarangi, ma, tengi, maral, maringi. Eh, girel provide, tarangi, el, artigel, adar bela, rurior, o, sisi, will benefit. Anding, dirka, a, tal, kabalmenta enforcer, tegidil, alla. Ma, ah, agi, agi, mal, mesanga, ah, til, agidil, molgor ngil, wasay, bol, base on contract. Ndigi, kitte, tialo, mesera, a, dra, banglades. El ngaria contractor ti, el kmasingiri, lurior, telang. Ndita, malang, tamalaya, side jobs, e, galikta, malguludodra, maas. Mung, te, dekal, moral, konge, lurior, em, oklu. Dirga, di konge, ma, tamay, ndi, ti, radio, siga, aldu, ulel, eh, guk, malarang, ngarba, bra, minimum wage. Me, la, ta, di, soluwe, imol, mesel, di, erul, siga, nget, momre, e, galikta, doridala. Dirga, amsura, fifteen dollar, fifteen dollar a hour. Mung, kada, bay, chit, tegidil, la, weyer, la, kal, la, pay tax, ma, dekal, lol tirakla, la. Ngau, kain, direct, mal complicated, eh, dal issue, ma, ulma, met, ngaragam, ma, koramo, malusra, la, almo, wa, isele, mukakarosa enforcement, tarangi, ma, kapongi, I.
Akmadangalisa, lolkor ngia, ngirma, dikmal, direct, understand, til, al, lolkor ngia, Chair Lady. Ngirma, a, competition, a, mal healthy, mang, malungil. P E R M, minimum wage, son, mora beklat, eh, kitto, siga, aldu, ulel, eto, sigal, wasal, sukum, guk, private sector, gu. Ngaral contractor, se, me, rule, mora, adar belaw, moringi, saygid, wasay, guk, teka, diludod, and direct, al, al, talangok, langarankle, la, gaidil, korra, bek, patangil. Eh, kadi, direct, miloko, Chair Lady, wasa, trainings. Ang, teka, dam, kararingi, teagida, propose, ringi, wasay. A government, who, eh, e bol outsourced, I get rokul, rurior. Eh, ngia, private sector, omo, atomas, el bekle, a, eh, kada, madingel, waseng, sebi ira, adar belaw, rurul. Ma, gorsel, outsourced, me, eh, gamam, ki, guk, bomrur, the private sector, gamam, ma, P C C, ma, gir rokui, lomdaswa, programmer, training. Leng, direct, sebeel, tell minimum wage, el bomrelil, wasay, al suku, ma, minimum wage, el adar belaw, a, mo, rurior. El mo, masukar, minimum wage, em, mo required, ra two months, training. Masel, la, bol required, two months, training, em, guk, mo, maskamam, mang, bo, ngaralam. Me, la, guk, pa, ngaralam, em, ma, garam, a, gim, afford, the, train. Saygid, sell, gikuk, moliwe, kalmewa, wasay, me, the public-private partnership. Ah, polo, mo, ultal, besel, tax system, em, ngarasa, ba, amel incentives, el gamam, a, private sector, al suku, ma, gi, trainer, a, damam, a, lerul, boila. El mo, masukar, tell, minimum wage, se, ngil, lurior. Eh, ngari, guk, sepeel, a, private sector, small businesses, especially, el male, is tax incentives, ma luben tax breaks. Ra guk, gageid, mung, te, amo, weyer, partnership, ra, government, ma, private sector, trainer, tirgalat. El a, miul, government, a, u dangel, wasa, guk, malul, tuir, tirgel, kado, waset, hundred fifty, il, ma, clau, lkombalil, pay tax, el me, ra, tell, national treasury, kid. Ndikmal, lamesan, morue, madingel, wasay, a, bomal, ngasell, by, mo, C C E, tell, small businesses, tell belaw. Ay, misal, mom, sisi, el di, mo, ay, kalududet, kada, korra, di, mo, oludra, imol, kamildele, eh, udalia, kada, la, la, do. A, ulak, malukoi, I, gal, ma, clau, lkombalia, dekal, lo, masinda, lo, na, adar belaw, ta, diders tang. Eh, omasinda, ti, ra, adarangod, el blu, a, on, ma, teka, dekal, ngarasyukang. Em, makita, sebeel, kira, ka, ingase, um, sebeel, dekal, make sure, and, dekal, mo, songreng, dekal, mo, dekal, albo, albo, la, ke, ringi. Mo, botolisi, a, gaidil, small businesses, are micro, tirgel, di, imonge, o, shobail, and clean-up lay. El mora, small, a, gakarel, stoang, al, uben, a, tracers, el mora, a, medium, lamos, sepeel, talgib, el guk, koramo, ko, o, gakarel, lamo, o, mula, more than one enterprise. Tolisi, a, gaidil, et, tell, tax, el bomosukar ngi, a, mo, weyer, la, til, ngara, alsel, belaw. Ma, kada, sebeel, ma, lin, sadomas, ringi, wasay, mlar, ke, remut, tau, taranggarang. Akmalow, ay, say, gel, hundred fifty, il, tira, lakotom, ulu, urt, tell, kabalment regid. Omasinda, mal, deka, gare, ringi, al, baskamiu, mga, ka, ulak, ma, lol, lol, du, urte, gid, al, du, lurior, girel, tax reform. Le, omasinda, ra, outsiders, el four percent, akma, le, taona, yate, bato, hangar, ti, ra, ay, krela, belaw. Ndiga, ngara, alsel, belaw, ta, di, maskit, tell, four percent, and, mal, gora, al, kong, cluludod, al, teka, gare, ra, rendir. Et, teagidil, besel, tax, how, ul, ma, mal, direct, luludob, ringi, wasay, more, li, a, gageidil, small business, mosse, ira, adar belaw, wasay. Ngarangas, sepeel, rully, urt, tell, gakarel, danganaklik. Mga, katal, no, olongose, urt, il, lonsis, akat, tirgaidil, el guk, korra, young entrepreneurs, star-ups, wasay, oh, lamata, damamata, lamet, tell, blim, ka, kuke, ke, rebap, me, yo. Ndia, kakke, yo, mukat, maklit, tell, babi, mrent, out, tarangi. Mung, guk, kumrelil, el, bo, ngarankle, malsu, mangari, a, guk, atamil, ngabi, tati, somlo, babi, somlo, mal, ka. Me, the, pora, T P M, kada, ma, gera, mlgasukha, o, guk, a, mospeel, mongari, ya. There's nothing wrong with starting from your own home, le, ka, adar belaw, ma, rethar, tell, blim, ma, danganaklim. Em, o, shobailo, mo, ra, blim, ki, dam, tangel, tari, tirgal, ruar, adar, omras, ma, adra, marul, galan, maas. Tirkaw, mu, ul, marula, ma, katingi, ra, blidir. Marul, eh, ma, au, dona, thaus, em, au, ngarang, they started at home. Me, thol, ngase, urt, tirgal, ada, thalmo, mes, a, gaidil, guk, ngaringi, tir. Eh, thang, eh, thang, su tarir, eh, training, alam ring, eh, government, private partnership. Minimum wage, yes, lupar, beklat, et, ti, it's healthy to be competition, eh, competition, al mora. Ndisel, botol, ngaleo, or, guk, ra, dada, al, adar belaw, e, botol, route, tell, training, el guk, mortir. Al su, ka, adar bela, deka, skills, al, wine, gal, adarangod, el balloon welder, electrician, garam. Mangari, ya, sebeel, smig, a, training, a, captain, a, P C A A, ma, P C C, ndiak, la, ka, training, ndi, tirkal, ata, teka, du, tir. Mung, giretal, try and find a way, guk, mo, incentive, mung, sebeel, lo, mu, ulertir. Em, kusel, blabol, dil, tir, et, ma, tax payer, direct. Tomlamos, sebeel, guk, fly with their own wings. Et, tell, belaw, at, ti, a, dil, tourism. Al tourism, sebeel, ka, tourist, ra, talongalit, nding, gaidil, mal, tokor, rurior, rua. Ah, tokor, a, omkatoora, omkatoora, play, om, carpentry, ma, a, gaidil, a, gaidi, a, maral, tokor, rurior, girel, a, ad, maasang, al, magis. Eh, maasang, al, mases, ngari, a, loru, al su, to, spea, training, el bol, ngari, a, kro, tell. El mortir, luthangel, wasay, both government, private sector, a, oldub, arngak, el mora, training.
Suluang. Suluang, ramalungil, kamen, ta, kawe, Ms. Olgarila. Dikngari, a, mutasol, kamente. Governor, dikngari, a, somalkmo.
Um, Saul, the Chair. Chair, naga, aktima, mo, du, on behalf, Igar State, de, gamama, dirga, ngartegidil, minimum, ki, dirga, ngartiris, seventy-five. Eh, se, su, mang, coming October, in, that's fifty cents, in increase. Mung, sebeel, lo, du, kase, one, la, la, taraganga, thousand, four, dollar, ah, increase, el, maldudet. Eh, eh, say, ya, mo, tarir, meringa, ma, Igar State. Mung, di, kuse, kama, ma, de, mo, business, ndiak, a, gidele, business, el sebeel, no, ma, du, business, al, tam, tel, mal, eganami. Eh, say, ya, mo, tarir, gik, keringa, ma, madinge, kuse, moso, am, me, on, ti, on, ma, el, chatu, gi, pradamam, el, me, on, ti, kuse, me, eda, la, lakuan, mbo, su, am, gi, pradamam. Let's go, mung, diak, ak, bayon, ak, bayon, it, kuse, cle, sebeel, extend, ra, date, ah, date, al mo. Ah, leng, eh, al, from, today, mora, egan, a, di, six months. Mung, wa, bol, meringa, adjustment, a, ma, me, say, da, gil, a, sam, kuse, gim, katta, service, eh, gi, pradamam, al, u, bagi, mo, gi, prad, a, 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 ki, a, a, sa, a, 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 service, on, gi, prad, dada, se, da. Akti, se, da, kik, keringi, leng, wal, kuse, kasing, wal, wa, wal, debata, mung, et, al, mal, eganami, egidam, a, gire, dam, a, dimulto, mora, di, be, in, six, six months. The, di, say, da, wa, di, keringa, ngake, di, ngamal, kuse, tell, la, malungil, la, um, Saul.
Kamusulang. Um, ablapola, kamente, to, simra, hearing. Komaral, musulang, ra, malungil, hearing, eh, agi, mal, mal, ngasulil, lo, ngu, atay, me, make, tell, the public hearing. Eh, man, mal, ngasule, la, Mister Olutong, ma, kawe, Ms. Olgarila, lo, sebeel, me. Um, you know, ra, adar belaw, kita, dekal, ngari, amondal, ngi, dam, a, concern, gid, and, di, dekal, salswad, al, mira, buay, em, sa, ta, iki. Mung, mal, masaul, lwaya, mokora, a, ngari, ra, beklat. Eh, as gu, mang, a, a, I, win, am, la, send, a, kamen, tarangi, me. Ndiso, mang, ngari, a, kamen, eh, Mister Olutong, al, written, al, sepeel, submit, eh, ma, direct, guk, baby, a, small businesses, sa, ngari, a, concern, ti, ma, di, adra, buay, agi, mal, mal, ngasuli, well. Ma, kawe, Mister Masayos, ah, KMT, W C T C, wa, say. Oh, okay. Kam, kamusulang, eh, while, sepeel, a, direct, kamen, ta, kame, when, mal, clau, lkombalie, employer, betokal, adar belaw. Mung, himal, mal, ngasuli, we, eh, mal, di, su, wasay, a, mal, mokte, kara, habil. A, direct, address, is, el, out migration issue, em, employer, mutal, betokal, adar belaw. Eh, tham, garam, eh, mosbeel, kampit, kita, ma, a, adarangod, el blul, al, ti, me, uru, ra, sir, belaw. Leng, ah, sell, do, ngargir, ra, blur, belaw. Eh, gey, karakarangia, la, blur, belaw, masu, mang, betokal, adarangod, blu, ngartang, mang, ngargir, sell, karakarangia, la, blur, belaw, eh, makasaya, mara, adar belaw. Mung, giret, lamesa, ringi, wa, say, let, ti, di, imol, pay, kada, di, imili, darangi, ra, adro, ngale, dava, say, wa, ngarang. Mung, saygida, direct, mal, alban, alil, olbi, da, kalulaw, wasay, ma, garam, mongil, basri, ra, adar belaw, ulma, tel, minimum wage, a, agi, mal, gim, o, meser ngi. Eh, sell, analytics, ra, salary, sen, wait, says, say, gimo, ru, ra, tax, eh, gide, direct, mal, ulmes. Eh, madinge, say, mal, betokal, adar bela, mta, arbasri, mal, mta, arbasri. Eh, a, ulam, mal, mta, arbasri, ra, deka, te, la, rurior. Le, olgu, ma, tirgel, rokui, ngar, sell, talungalka, mo, rurior, eh, mongil, basul, sell, talungalka. Saygida, direct, mal, klo, tutela, employment opportunities, el, mora, adar belaw. Ma, akma, di, mo, mo, a, gey, mo, bertiga, Senator, ma, flow, leader, a, Senate, eh, mo, osmeni, tell, public hearing, or, tell, Senate Bill, eleven, nine. Suluang.